Okay, good evening. We're going to call our meeting to order. This is the Monroe Township Board of Education's special meeting. Today is Thursday, May 5th, 2022. We will begin with our Pledge of Allegiance. If everyone will please stand.
(Inaudible) to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. All right. First, we need a motion to appoint a temporary board secretary.
Motion to appoint Karen Bierman as temporary secretary of this special meeting this evening.
Second.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Accusals? Abstentions? Okay. Then, Mrs. Bierman will be our temporary board secretary for this evening. Ms. Bierman, can we get a roll call?
Mrs. Arminio. Mrs. Balco.
Here.
Ms. Bierman is here. And Ms. Bora.
Here.
Mr. Shirella.
Here.
Mrs. Fabiano.
Here.
Mr. Nikotinsky.
There.
Mrs. Fratner.
I'm here.
Mrs. Skirby.
Here.
And me.
Madam.
And...
Oh, and there he is, Mr. Paul Rutske.
Here.
In a different section. Madam President, you have a quorum.
Thank you. You have our statement.
In accordance with the provisions of the New Jersey Open Public Meetings Law, the Monroe Township Board of Education has caused notice of this meeting to be published and electronic notice provided by having the date, time, and place thereof posted May 3rd, 2022 at all schools on the district website at HTTPS backslash backslash www.monroe.k12 nj.us, The Home News Tribune, Cranberry Press, and filed with the clerk of the municipality.
Thank you. Our next item on the agenda is our public forum. So I just want to start off by saying thank you all for coming tonight. There is a large group here, and we certainly do respect that you all took the time out of your busy schedules to come to this meeting. We value public involvement in our school district, and we want to hear what you have to say. We would like to get to as many people to speak as possible tonight. Please understand that we could have done the public forum after our closed session, but in the interest of not making you wait hours to speak, I put it first. I'm hoping we could keep this to under two hours. I want to remind us all that we should maintain a tone of respect and civility. Courteous behavior is extremely important to maintain proper decorum and foster a safe environment for all involved. Please only speak when you have the floor. This will help keep order and move the meeting along. Anyone wishing to speak, please come to the podium to address the board. State your name and address for the record, and you will have four minutes to speak.
Good evening. Betty Sabarito, 2 Barrymore Drive. I want to address the two agenda items, but wanted to first thank the board and this administration for their hours of service to our district, especially the board that you are here as volunteers. Board members that as elected officials, you are unfortunately open to criticism, but the public personalized bashing of some of you, in my eyes, is not acceptable, and I hope you know that so many of us in this community voted for you and support you. I now want to speak as a parent and taxpayer, as well as the leader of the state mandated group CPAG, and we would like to voice our support of the extension of Mrs. Chanley as acting superintendent. It is evident that she possesses the conviction necessary of an effective leader and that her commitment to our district and our student is unwavering. Since November 2021, I have collaborated closely with her in my capacity as leader of CPAG and have been pleased with her commitment to improving our special ed programs. And it's not just a commitment, but the action of things that we have seen in the past few months that we have long advocated for and have not happened for years. She has worked diligently with Dr. Lehman and our supervisors and has worked with us to address and improve areas in special ed of reading, comprehension, programs at all home schools, support of the self-contained classrooms, and many areas that we have long, long advocated for. As such, I am confident that she is an integral part of the success of this district. Under her leadership and this board's leadership, we have seen many positive items come about that seem not to be focused on because everyone is focusing on such nonsense. We have hired a new special education supervisor. We have presented a fiscally responsible referendum that addresses all needs across the district. We have done an organizational scan and the necessary adjustments to the organizational chart and many job descriptions. We have launched the advertising initiative, which is going to bring much-needed money into our district. We have the summer enrichment program that will continue this year and in the future will bring more revenue to our district. We have a budget that is prepared by administration and a board and is a collaboration. It is not done by one person. This board has been responsive to parent resident requests and has always aimed to answer any email that they have been sent. We also have given reconsideration of the school calendar after so many voiced concerns because of the Rosh Hashanah holiday. It is imperative for this district to have a continuum of leadership so that we can move forward in the right direction and address the things that are so many times at this podium not spoken about: the referendum, curriculum, students. We have all heard a lot of personal attacks the last few meetings, and that does nothing to benefit our students or this district. What example are we setting for our children? Most of what I have witnessed would be a hit if done by our students. What a shame, and I thank all of you for your service.
Tim S. O. 2 Allison Court. I want to address the resolutions on the agenda tonight. I think I can speak for over the thousand residents in Monroe Township that signed a petition back in 2018, asking the board to investigate the business administrator after finding him guilty of three state ethics violations. Basically running a tax business from the board office on taxpayers' time. I just, it's hard for me to even fathom the reason why that some of the people behind me want to see this man back in a position without an investigation. If somebody is in fact guilty of three state ethics violations, he should be investigated. If he committed a crime, he should be investigated, and if he's found exonerated of those crimes, he should get his job back. But let the investigation ensue. I would think every single person here tonight would want the board to do an investigation. Everybody, every taxpayer listening tonight, every taxpayer behind me. Let's get to the bottom of it all. Is there any wrongdoing? We don't know, but clear there must be reason for suspension pending an investigation. Three state ethics violations could be that. Let's look at the facts of the past few years. The day after the board president, board VP, and curriculum chairperson were elected, the board attorney tendered her resignation. The day after the election. The day after the election. Does anybody see a problem with that? I do. We said it then, and it was a red flag. Then we watched the board vote no to the BA's contract last spring when Dr. Alvik recommended he be approved. Shortly after that, she retires. Dr. Alvik had a five-year contract that she was nowhere even near finishing. Nowhere even near. Why should she retire? We see on social media that the former board president Kathy K. and Steve Ryback are adamantly opposed to any questions this new board is raising. Why is that? What is the fear this board will discover? If everything they did while in those positions was by the book and appropriate, why would they fear an investigation? Wouldn't they want to clear their own name if they are sure there is no wrongdoing? It's common sense to me. I want to apologize to you, even if it is only a select few, for the way you have been treated the last few months while serving our district. Many people don't understand that this is a voluntary position. No one's getting paid for this position, and the abuse you are taking is uncalled for by people behind me and people in the community. I suggest you stay off social media. I commend you for your perseverance in holding your head high while driving our district and our students to a very bright future. You have shown your strength and focus as we are moving forward with a fiscally responsible referendum the community has been begging for for years. We have seen a budget approved unanimously last month with a decrease in taxes for the second year in a row. You took the reins in November, and our district did not skip a beat. Thank you for all you do, and please do not read the trash, once again, on social media because the Greater Monroe Community knows it's all baseless lies coming from a bitter person who lost her election two years in a row for the Board of Education. In closing, I want to say, nobody deserves to be beat up and scorned as they are at these meetings, especially for positions that you're not getting paid for, or regardless. You shouldn't be getting scorned or beat up for it regardless. It's not right. It's immature, okay? If you can't handle the fact that you can't control a board, okay, from the stands, then run. Give it your best shot. You'd probably lose at this point, but give it your best shot. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Patricia Amelia with the Aloia Law Firm, 2 Broad Street, Suite 510, from Bloomfield, New Jersey. And I'm here on behalf of our client, the Monroe Parents for Education. Particularly, there are two items on your agenda this evening that you're scheduled to discuss and vote on, two very important matters, one being whether or not you're going to allow the board attorney to request from the Commissioner of Education an extension for the approval of your acting superintendent, and the second is whether the board's going to continue the suspension of employee number 1052. As you're aware, the School Ethics Act deems it essential that the conduct of members of boards of education and local school administrators hold the respect and confidence of the people in their community. Per the School Ethics Act, board members and even school administrators must avoid conduct which is in violation of their public trust and which creates a justifiable impression among the public that such trust is being violated. To ensure and preserve public confidence, school board members and local school administrators should have the benefit of specific standards to guide their conduct, and that's where we have the School Ethics Act that every single one of you is required to abide upon. And it's the public policy of the state of New Jersey that public officials avoid even the appearance of impropriety. The ultimate question here tonight is whether or not any of you have a potential conflict of interest on voting of either of those two important resolutions. It's my client's belief that several members of the board here tonight may be conflicted on voting on those two resolutions. For example, under NJSA 18A12, 24.1F, you have sworn an oath to, "I will refuse to surrender my independent judgment to special interests or partisan political groups, or to use the schools for personal gain, or for the gain of friends." A board member must recuse him or herself from discussing or voting on a friend's employment contract. If you're close personal friends with a board employee, if you have celebrated family milestones, celebrated birthdays together, you should recuse yourself from discussion and from voting. If you've posted on social media about your special friendship, you should recuse yourself from discussion and voting. President Skirby, it's my client's belief that you should recuse yourself based on your personal friendship with the acting superintendent, and it's also my client's belief that the close personal friendship conflict also applies to other board members, board member Nikotinsky and board member Shirella. For example, you all went and celebrated Nicholas's communion, and on Facebook, there was a hashtag, #FriendsThroughItAll. So when the board moves to go to executive session, I expect to see all three of you out here with the rest of the public because you should not be going and having any discussion about the acting superintendent's contract.
Wonderful religious.
NJSA 18A12-24B, no school official shall use or attempt to use his official position for unwarranted privileges. Again, we have board members that should not be voting based upon personal, possible, potential, personal financial gain.
Thank you. Your time is up.
Thank you for hearing me this evening. I look forward to seeing you out here with the rest of the public.
Prakash Parab, 33 Denard Drive. Good evening, BOE President, BOE Members, Superintendent, and the district administrators. With respect to Business Administration's position, what action BOE has taken, we request that legal process follow its due process. Very recently, in Hillsborough, the former Business Administrator Mohammed resigned in last December. Then, two days later, the Superintendent Lisa Atins began to leave, had applied for leave or absence, and resigned very recently. There were multiple areas of concerns in the district, financial operations in that school district, and investigation is going on. I'm giving the example of what goes on in the state, presenting this case, which is happening now at present. We have school district budget of $140 million, a huge amount. We need regular audit as per the requirement and a forensic audit at least once in three years. You can do it now to be transparent and fair for the taxpayers. The expectation is Business Administrator or administration should follow the standard operating procedure described by the Department of Education or whatever the authority is. The expectation is Business Administrator need to keep out of politics. In case he or she is corresponding with political or legislative authorities or political public, it is good practice that the supervisor, the superintendent, is coped. The Business Administrator need to understand that he or she is reporting to the supervisor, who's a superintendent and not a vice versa. I request that legal process takes place in this situation. Also, I request vote yes on extension of Mrs. Chari Chanley as acting superintendent and having Acting Business Administrator let the legal process take place. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
My name is Elizabeth Hans. I'm a resident at Rossmore and a 10-year resident of Monroe Township. At one point in my life, I lived in East Brunswick in a very modest Cape Cod, and I used to refer to myself as the happy taxpayer. And why was I the happy taxpayer? Because I felt I got good value for my tax dollars. I felt there was a great deal of integrity in how my tax dollars were expended, and when I went to sell my very modest home, I sold it for 50% above my asking price because of the perceived quality of the public education in East Brunswick at that time. When we moved to Monroe, although I live in a senior community, I realized that the value of my housing is no longer dependent on the perception of the quality of the education in Monroe Township. But nonetheless, I, as an involved, engaged taxpayer, I am very much interested in seeing that my tax dollars are appropriately expended. I do not believe that my tax dollars will be appropriately expended, and what I perceive as future legal battles over the fact that we have erroneously, perhaps negligently, dissolved a relationship, or at least at this point suspended, a Business Administrator who has received very clean audits for many, many years. Nor do I believe that as a taxpayer that I will be well-served by any future legal complications that will arise from approving a further extension of the acting superintendent's contract. Thereby, I am here this evening to simply speak to those two personnel issues. I basically asked this board to vote no on the extension of the acting superintendent. I have already written to both the state and Middlesex County Commissioner of Education raising my objections. Should this board approve that extension, I will continue to raise my voice in protest. And I'm also, as a taxpayer, very much concerned about maintaining an excellent financial rating for our municipality and for our board. I'm also asking to vote that this board vote no on the suspension of our Business Administrator. Thank you.
Liz Prouster, 29 Spruce Meadow Drive. I didn't intend to speak tonight, but when I walked in and I heard the woman speaking about conflicts of interest, of friendships in a community. I've been in this community for close to 20 years, and I've met friends and I've had relationships from the volunteer work I've done in this town. I have friends that are staff, administrators, board members, and I've, it's crazy to say you can't be friends. I've seen board members here approve Mr. Gorsky's contract and say, "Thank you to my friend, you deserve it," and didn't balk or say anything. The fact that a community are friends is what we need more of here, not less of. Thank you.
Excuse me. Good evening. I'm Linda Bozowski, 388A, Warrington Lane. I live in the Rossmore community. Thank you for extending the courtesy to us, the audience, in moving the public forum to the beginning of the discussion. I don't normally write notes for what I'm going to say, but I did jot down two questions, three questions. As an accountant who has worked for Arston Young, MR Weiser &amp; Company, and in numerous hospitals and doctors' practices for the last 40 years, I have to question why there was no negative comment made from the auditing firm that was engaged by this board in the most recent audit of our financial statements. I fail to understand what the issue is with whatever is being characterized as misappropriation or inappropriate accounting principles from the business office here in the district. So I have a real question about that. In 22 years, there's never been a statement, from what I understand, in any of our audit findings. The second comment that I'd like to make, well, second question that I'd like to ask is, according to the contract that I read, when Ms. Chanley was engaged as our acting superintendent, the contract that was signed by Mrs. Arminio as president of the board at that time, it very clearly stated that the superintendent and, as all of our administrators, are expected to be on the job at the time that they're being paid to be on the job. And yet, in the Oprah documents that have been produced and in other comments that have been made at public board meetings, it appears that Ms. Chanley is going to school at least one day a week instead of being on the job. I don't understand that. If that's not correct, then please correct me. That's fine. The third statement that I'd like to make, which is in fact a statement, is that after reviewing all of the Oprah documentations that Ms. Aziz has provided to us, they're Oprah documents, she didn't make them up, but it strongly suggests that we are being served by a superintendent, an acting superintendent, who is not appropriately qualified to serve in that position and is not approved by other educational departments within our county and within our state. Sarah Aziz is not my best friend. We were competitors in the last board election, but nonetheless, these are documents that were obtained legally under Oprah provisions. So I urge the board members who are going to vote tonight to think very carefully about whether our district is being well-serviced by an individual who has, in my mind, questionable credentials. Thank you.
Michael Oleski, 50 Mayberry Avenue, Pierrot, Monroe. And I just don't have a lot written. In fact, I normally have things written, but I just want to let you know that ever since the day that I saw that announcement come out about this meeting today and what was on the agenda, I've been very upset, very, very upset. I voted for each and every one of you that are actually here, and I know some of you probably know that I've been watching, coming to meetings now for, I think, maybe six or seven years, and I just want to let you know how things appear to me. Appearance, I guess, being pretty important. Certainly, even before this year, there was always the appearance that there were personal attacks being shoved away of Michael Gorsky. It always seemed as if, me sitting in the audience watching, that there was a personal vendetta against him by certain people. And of course, since January 1st, it was, I don't know if it was the same meeting or maybe the very next meeting, certain responsibilities of his were taken away. And as I kind of recall, I'm not so sure there were other changes that were made, but they were all directed, again, at Michael Gorsky. And I guess I've noticed too, over the last couple of months, I guess as we're talking and working on the referendum, unlike in the past where the Business Administrator was involved, for some reason, he's been excluded. So I'm not surprised that he doesn't make a comment even because what's he commenting on if he doesn't have any information himself? Just hoping that you folks take a careful look at whatever information you have, make the proper judgment, do it honestly, because that's in fact what I expect of you. All I can say is just hoping that things work out well for our town and also for the students here in Monroe. We have so much important work to do, and unless there's some big issue that needs to be investigated, all well and good, but if there really isn't, let's get on with actually managing the business of our school district and find a way to work with one another. I was telling a few folks here that I was brought up working for Exxon and ConocoPhillips in Linden, and you could say all the bad things you want about the oil companies, but boy, did they do a good job of teaching business ethics. I remember the statement we had to sign. It was a statement, but there was a booklet, 13, 14 pages long, and I remember very clearly being told and of course, it being explained in these booklets, that you've always got to be concerned about the appearance of impropriety. And apparently, I guess I heard a little while ago, that there are words of that sort in business ethics that apply to you folks. So just ask that you do the right thing, give it some thought, and praying for our town. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi. Pradeep Malam, 4 J Place. So today, we have almost full house. Where are these people when we put a open house and to get the ideas about the proposed referendum? I don't see any faces here that they come over there. So these are all coming to rally for an appointed crook. I can say with content it's crook because I'm the one who operated his records from Department of Education, School Ethics Commission, and then send it to the leadership when I was found that. And they covered it up, saying it's a personal matter. We can't do anything. We can't comment on anything. He will continue his job with a raise and with an extended vacation package. Okay? I live at that point on that particular item. And I see there was a book published on the case of Chari Chanley, okay? I see all the pages and I see like some Oprah documents and everything. Whatever the cry in that book is not happened yesterday, is not happened after she become an interim superintendent or intermediate superintendent, okay, or acting superintendent. These are all happened in 2013, 2012, something like that, okay? Where were you then? Why don't you ask then leadership? Why don't you ask, "We have some dignitaries here who served the board at that time." Why don't you ask the same question to them? Why they were sleeping at that time? Why you are bringing up, why you are sharing the pot now? That's all my two cents for this meeting.
My name is Roberta Nelson, 145 Tournement Drive. I'd like to begin with a question for all of you tonight. What is truth? What is truth? Is it telling a lie over and over? Is it vitriol repeated multiple times? Excuse me? Or just displays of vengeance? No, the truth is based on facts, and clearly, this board is not concerned about the truth, fairness, transparency, or ethics. You've supported a person for interim superintendent who has misrepresented her credentials, is holding an EDD degree for five years. That's no typo. Her resume is questionable. 18 to 20 years in pursuit of an EDD and still hasn't earned it? She has no central office experience, yet saw fit to pay her more than we've seen fit to pay her more than any previous superintendent in Monroe's history? You've suspended our business administrator, Michael Gorski, who's done a fabulous job for many years. Our previous superintendent left because of your tactics, and so did our house attorney. You're developing a referendum without the benefit of Michael Gorski, who has knowledge and experience needed for such projects. So your truth is that you care more about power than education. It's time for our community to stand up for the truth and demand that you put the education of Monroe's children first, not your power game. Vote no to request an extension of Ms. Shanley's certification and no to the suspension of Michael Gorski. We reject your agenda of vengeance and lies.
Madeline Ryback, 23 Riviera Drive. First and foremost, a school district's biggest concern should be about quality education for children by an outstanding staff, not about a power-hungry, self-serving school board who couldn't find the time, an appropriate, who couldn't find the time to find an appropriate qualified superintendent in all these months, because they waste their time harassing staff and other board members. Or could this negligence be because they are giving Ms. Shanley more time to complete a doctorate that couldn't be accomplished in 18 to 20 years? Isn't 18-year-old research outdated? From "Children Learn What They Live" by Dorothy Lord Nolte, Ph.D., this is not a complete poem. If children live with hostility, they learn to fight. If children learn with ridicule, they learn to feel shy. If children learn with shame, live with shame, they learn to feel guilty. If children learn with encouragement, they learn confidence. If children live with approval, they learn to like themselves. If children learn with encouragement, they learn confidence. If children live with approval, they learn to like themselves, I'm sorry. If children learn, live with recognition, they learn it is good to have a goal. If children live with honesty, they learn truthfulness. If children live with fairness, they learn justice. If children live with kindness and consideration, they learn respect. What the children of Monroe are learning is that deceit, disrespect, aggression, intimidation, superiority, and cronyism are acceptable modus operandi. Is that what this community wants for its children? Restore Mr. Gorski to his rightly deserved position and vote no to extend Ms. Shanley's contract. Find a superintendent that has the most up-to-date knowledge, is forward-thinking, and can help bring this community together, not continue to break it apart. In addition, why doesn't this be a way, try and come out, coming up with its own goals? Maybe they can have an idea of how to function appropriately.
Brian Fabiano, 19 Patricia Place. I thought about what I would say tonight. I usually have a lot to say, as you know. And I didn't come up here to attack anybody's credentials, anybody's voting capabilities, but I thought long and hard, what do these agenda items mean before you today? What do they mean for the district going forward? What do they mean for the oath you took at the beginning of your terms to what you would uphold in our district? To come in here and see barricades and police officers and, it shouldn't be this way. We're a community, and I think everybody here, we all want the same thing at the end of the day. I wasn't going to talk about the barriers, but you know, you sit down and immediately you feel like you're in some ball pit, you know, and there's this animosity between the public and this board. You have a very important decision amongst you tonight. Quite frankly, I've been in discussions with the State Department of Education, the county, and other areas, and I wonder why this vote and this public meeting didn't happen at the first extension? Because apparently, or according to the State Department of Education, at every three-month increment, there is supposed to be an open public meeting with a resolution to extend the contract. I don't know why it didn't happen in February, but perhaps someone could shed some light on it. But I think you all ask yourselves tonight, and you can smirk and you can intimidate, doesn't matter to me. You know, what it comes down to at the end of the day is, you know, I think there was a woman here earlier that said about conflicts. You know if you're conflicted. You know if you have predisposed opinions coming into this room. You know what you've said in the public, you know what you've said in messages, you know what you've done previously. So if you're really here to support the school community and the ethics that you, codes that you swore to, you're going to get evidence that obviously, as a public, we're not going to get. It's personnel. A lot of people have come up and said Gorski, I mean, unless I know that he's 1052, I mean, we can assume, because there's a motion on here to get an acting BA. But I would say if you represent the interests of this school system, moving it forward, and you stand by the oaths and your principles, you know whether you can vote on certain things, you know whether you are conflicted, you know whether you've filed ethics complaints on people before, you know if you have friendships and whatever it is. But at the end of the day, as a community, we all want the same thing. We want our children to go forward. For me, it's not, this is not an evaluation of Chari Shanley's experience as a principal in the middle school. My kids never went through the middle school yet. For me, it's not an attack on Chari Shanley's performance in this district to date, and I think I've always been clear and fair with you. It's about Chari Shanley and the role of acting superintendent, whether she will become permanent, and it's whether or not employee 1052, which can be applied by the agenda, is so, has committed such egregious crimes, violations, errors, that you feel it's necessary to take a tenured person out of their position. Thank you.
My name is Tracy Hart. I reside at 110 Avenue K East, Monroe Township. I'm here tonight to seek some answers to numerous questions that I've asked, and I've been at the public forum several times, to Norville, to answers to numerous questions. At the conclusion of my remarks is usually a thank you, but I want to have answers to questions. The questions are very simple, doesn't require a lot, just a complete truthful answer. What I want to know is, what is the true issue with the budgeting approval process and the way the business administration, administrator in his office was operating? What are the true issues? There have been numerous audits that have not flagged any major problems to be identified, and if there is an audit with identifiable problems, there's always a plan of correction. It appears that there is a limited understanding of business practices and budgeting. Once this board approves an annual budget, each item on the budget is approved for expenditure, unless there are specific requirements. One, you need additional approval if it exceeds the amount, or sometimes in some budgets, there's a cap. If it goes over a certain amount, you may want additional approval. This board has bigger issues and concerns that are more relevant and more problematic in this district, such as overcrowding, curriculum development, getting a referendum passed. And one of my concerns currently is the establishment of a community meeting group to address parental concerns of issues that have been happening in this district that has not been established, that was promised to be established over two years ago. With that regard, I ask that you reinstate the business administrator so that he can continue his practice of having stellar audit reviews. My next question pertains to the acting superintendent. Today is May 5th. I just want to know, will you be graduating within the next week, two weeks? There have been a moving target, December, January, year after year after year. When is it going to happen? I think at this point, there's been numerous opportunities, and I ask that this board, because you're charged with operating in the best interest of the students of this district and not mismanage taxpayer dollars. With that in mind, I'd ask that you not extend her contract. Thank you.
Kathy Kalapanowicz, 104 North Bergen Mills Road. I'm here this evening to speak about Mr. Gorski. Mr. Gorski has been employed in this district for 23 years. He has worked under 10 superintendents, including Mrs. Shanley. He has been an outstanding BA, assistant BA during that time. There have been 22 perfect audits by two auditing firms with no recommendations. The business office has perfect CUSAC scores. The transportation department under Mr. Gorski is number one in the county and one of the top in the state. He has renegotiated bonds and saved our community millions of dollars. He has advocated for more fair funding from the state and even wrote his own legislation. Food service department under Mr. Gorski has one of the lowest lunch prices in the state and is self-sufficient. He is good at thinking out of the box, as he did with the Jamesburg Agreement, which was used by other districts in the same situation as Monroe. The high school and Oaktree schools were opened on time and under budget. Applegard School was closed and reopened as an elementary school. Capital projects have been incorporated into the yearly budget without having to go for a referendum. All these through buildings and grounds under Mr. Gorski. For 22 years, Mr. Gorski has had an excellent evaluations and no letters in his file. I could go on and on about all the good things Mr. Gorski has done for Monroe, but I only have four minutes. So what's changed in the past few months? Well, right board at the right time. We all know a plan has been in the works for many years. First, Mrs. Skirby needed to be elected to the board, then become board president. She had to make sure members were elected who would support her agenda. Then the board had to appoint Mrs. Shanley, Mrs. Skirby's best friend, as interim superintendent, someone who is underqualified, overpaid, and will walk out of a meeting in a huff when she doesn't like what is being said. Mrs. Shanley knows her job is to help Mrs. Skirby in her quest for vengeance. Mrs. Skirby has a bad habit of retaliating against people who she believes has done her wrong. PTAs? She'll let the next PTA president handle the mess she made. PTOs? If she's not going to be elected middle school PTO president, she'll create her own parent group, supported by Mrs. Shanley. Mrs. Skirby filed ethics charges against three board members because she didn't like their vote on the PSA. Those charges were dismissed. Someone has an issue with Jamesburg? Mrs. Skirby will fix it. We'll divide our agenda and separate Monroe and Jamesburg. That will surely bring our communities together. Someone doesn't like a high school coordinator? Mrs. Skirby will fix it. Booster Club? She'll get back at them by working with Mrs. Shanley to steal their scholarship money. Don't like decisions Dr. Kozak makes? She'll just blackmail him. He won't, he'll go along with whatever Mrs. Skirby said, because at least she's not attacking me anymore, is what he said. I won't even mention all the people she has attacked using words such as racist, a cancer, a thief, a liar, and many more. What Mrs. Skirby didn't have until recently was a reason to get rid of Mr. Gorski. So we'll use the bill list as the catalyst for removing him. A list that has been used in this district for over 30 years. A list that has been looked at by two different auditors and found to be compliant. A list that a financial expert on the board has signed off on for years. A list that the former business administrator in this district used during his tenure in this district. Someone has an issue with Mr. Gorski? Mrs. Skirby will fix it, with the help of Mrs. Shanley. Mrs. Shanley, you ought to be ashamed of yourself in being complicit with Mrs. Skirby's revenge planning when you're supposed to be a role model for kids and students in this district. This is no longer a board of education, but it's a board of retaliation.
Ravi Chedavu, 14 Boncourt. I wasn't actually planning to come and talk out here, and I wasn't going to waste my time coming out here. I have a lot of other things to do, but I came solely for the reason, because my son is in the school, and I want the best for him. There are some people out here who commented that, you know, and who have been campaigning for getting you on the board and so on, and I have no personal things against any of you. Mrs. Shanley is a fine woman, she's a great principal and so on, nothing. They commented about the past, and I don't care about the past. I'm in right now, today, and I care about today. I want to ask a question, and to the audience as well. How many of you would take your kid to a pediatrician who comes out and says, I don't have, unfortunately, I don't have a medical degree? I was telling all along, I have a medicine degree, but I don't. Would you take your kid to a pediatrician? How many of you do that? Would you? It is, I'm sorry. It is the, it is a future of my child. It is a future of my child that is at risk. It is not, I am a tax-paying citizen, and I want the best for my son. I want the best highly-qualified professionals to take care of the school and manage the school. And what do I see? I see chaos. Has there been substantial progress in coming up with a plan for the new school? No. Do I hear about, you know, what programs should we have in the school to make it better? No. Do I see the morale of the teachers going up? Unfortunately, no. So what do I see? Pure chaos. Thank you.
Pete Tofano, 10 Catherine Street. Every one of you sitting in those chairs tonight are sitting there because the majority of this town had the confidence in you to make the decisions, the correct decisions for our township. I'm sure that every single one of you will go into closed session tonight, have all the facts, will discuss these things and make informed decisions. Now, there's no surprise tonight that all the moral and ethics warriors showed up tonight. And I would, I'm not really a gambling man, but I would probably lay my money roll in my pocket that most of the people up here bashing you didn't vote for you. So it's kind of expected that they're going to bash you, make you look bad. It's just typical in this town. But the same people who are up here bashing you and judging you and saying you're doing things unethical are the same people who voted in office, council members who take large cash donations from builders and developers, some of them ran for the BOE and did that, and they're the ones who are really disgusting and destroying this township, destroying our school system. I can guarantee you the majority of the people protesting your decisions did not write to the Congress or the state or the governor and ask for fair funding, because most of those people who make those decisions, they voted for as well. It's unfortunate, but politics is starting to try and take over the BOE again. It's also really hysterical to hear, I mean, to see some of the old board members in the audience, including the board president clap, when a well-dressed lawyer comes in here and says, you're not allowed to go to Little Nicky's Communion, because that's unethical. Meanwhile, we had most of the board members at Divine drinking it up and partying and insulting Mr. Chiarella, where he insulted, where his daughter heard it and was crying to him at night. Where is, what are we going to teach our children when that happens? Nothing, nothing. It was okay when they did it. When the other When the other side does something wrong, no problem. It's ethical. And that lawyer, Mary, Mary Smith, said to us, sitting in that chair where Vito's sitting, there's nothing wrong with them going to Divine as long as they're not discussing board business. Well, you know what? God bless Little Nicky and I'm glad you had your friends there to visit, to, to have fun with him. And damn anybody who says that they can't be friends, because that's bull. Because you were all friends when you were on the board together. Thank you.
I'm Doug Poey. I live at Fort Tamarack Road. As we all know, you've called a special meeting of the board tonight for purposes of discussion and possible action regarding employment of school business administrator. As you know, Mr. Gorski, our business administrator, has worked in this district for over 20 years, many of those as the business administrator. During that time, the business office received annual audits, which called for no corrective actions. Additionally, the county's CUSAC yielded nothing but positive results. Our business administrator saved this district millions of dollars during his leadership of the business office through negotiations with healthcare providers and shared service agreements, as well as, excuse me, the refinancing of bonds. He was instrumental in negotiations with various bargaining units within the district. He gained tenure as a result of his efficient and effective work under several superintendents. Based on positive evaluations, I would assume that he received appropriate financial compensation through increases in his salary. Yet, something has recently changed. He was denied a salary increase last year, and tonight this board is considering taking punitive actions against Mr. Gorski. It would seem that the board's treatment of Mr. Gorski has many similarities to that of our previous superintendent. Yes, I know, some of you will say she resigned, but the disrespect for her and her position prior to that resignation and a lack of any salary increase were a major cause of that resignation. I was particularly concerned with your actions regarding tonight's meeting and the special meeting notice which appeared in the home news, as well as in tonight's meeting agenda, which showed a complete lack of decency toward Mr. Gorski. In the special notice in the newspaper, you stated, quote, "Discussion and possible action regarding employment of school business administrator." In your agenda, you showed more discretion by referring to Mr. Gorski as employee number 1052 and made no mention of his position or his name. However, in personnel item C, you reveal who employee number 1052 is by speaking of naming a potential acting school administrator. Such actions on the part of the board may be legal, but they are not right, and far from showing any decency for someone who has worked in this district for so long. In the past several board meetings, some of you have raised questions about how the bills are paid. They were paid no differently than in past years. They were paid in accordance with a resolution contained in organizational item C of your meeting of January 3rd of this year. They were paid in accordance with Regulation 6470, Payment of Claims, and Title 18A 19-1 and 19-2, which are state law. If you want a different procedure for the payment of bills, then by all means, consider changing your organizational meeting resolution and your Regulation 6470. However, to now threaten punitive action over a procedure that has been used for so many years without first unveiling Mr. Gorski the opportunity to make the desired changes shows a total lack of fairness. As you go into closed session, I urge that you will strive to understand the facts, how these facts are known, and do they warrant any further punishment beyond what has already been imposed on Mr. Gorski. I hope that you will be fair, honest, and decent as you make your decisions of any action being voted on tonight. Thank you.
Sarah Aziz, 3 Lonslot Drive. I urge the board to immediately reinstate our business administrator, Michael Gorski. In my view, the acting superintendent and board members unjustly suspended Mr. Gorski without any due process to deflect attention from their own ethical problems. Mr. Gorski has a record of 22 perfect audits and his business office is recognized by the county for its financial best practices. If the board attempts to bring him up on tenure charges or remove him, they will be laughed out of court after wasting thousands of taxpayer dollars. If anything, the board should order an immediate forensic investigation into Mrs. Chanley's abuse of the tuition reimbursement policy. Over nearly the past 20 years, Ms. Chanley has collected over $30,000 in tuition reimbursements to attend three different doctoral programs at Florida Atlantic University, Liberty University, and Rowan University. One year, she was simultaneously enrolled in both Liberty and Rowan University doctoral programs at the same time at the expense of Monroe taxpayers. Her current contract requires taxpayers to continue to fund her doctoral studies. Mrs. Chanley's contract explicitly states that this agreement shall terminate immediately under certain conditions, including misrepresentation of employment history, educational con, educational and professional credentials. Given that the resume that Ms. Chanley submitted to obtain this position includes the misrepresentation that she will have a doctorate by December 2021, when it appears that based on her enrollment and tuition reimbursement history, that there is no way she could have achieved a doctorate by December 2021, there seems to be legal justification to terminate this employment contract immediately. Furthermore, the contract also stipulates that tuition reimbursement must culminate in the acquisition of a doctoral degree. It also seems that Ms. Chanley must pay back the taxpayers. No district employee should be allowed to game the system in this way. Ms. Chanley has advanced her career based on the appearance that she's about to achieve a doctorate when she's not actually doing the work that she needs to achieve one. For years, it appears that Ms. Chanley got reimbursed for taking elective courses instead of the required courses needed to graduate. I'm aware that a doctorate is not required for the position of superintendent, and yet I have not found any example of any school district in New Jersey that has paid an acting superintendent a starting salary of $195,000 without a standard school administrator certificate and no doctorate. Mrs. Skurby has repeatedly cited Mrs. Chanley's 19 years of experience with the district while failing to mention that none of those years included any central office experience until she began this position in November. The board president may argue that the bare minimum standards of credentials is sufficient and appropriate, but she has a responsibility to taxpayers to find the most highly qualified superintendent at the lowest price to taxpayers. Instead, Mrs. Skurby selects a very underqualified person at the highest price. This is an abuse of power. It does not matter that the board does not require a doctorate. The point is that Mrs. Chanley maintains enrollment, one credit at a time, in order to maintain enrollment and nothing else. If Ms. Chanley's intention is not to complete a doctoral program, as she has not done so for 18 years, then according to the terms of her contract and the board policy, she must refund the money. Mrs. Chanley has registered for Rowan's commencement seven different years and is now listed as due to graduate next week, but when I asked her to the date of her doctoral dissertation defense, she had no answers. Why is a public employee whose career has been facilitated by the appearance of obtaining a doctorate, does, Mrs. Chanley refuse to be transparent about her enrollment status when taxpayers are funding her doctoral studies? The board has already extended the contract of Cherry Chanley against the recommendation of the county superintendent. The board should stop acting against the interest of students and taxpayers and vote no on the contract extension of Mrs. Chanley.
Ramranath, 6 Owens Drive, Monroe. So a couple of agenda items, right? One is for employee number 1052, Mr. Gorski, presuming. I guess if the ethic charges and all that had been taken really seriously by the previous board presidents who are here, we would be in a much better shape. We would not have to deal with it today at this time. So unfortunately, they did not do their jobs, and thank you, Madam President, for, and for taking this forward. Now importantly, I want to focus on Ms. Chanley. It's funny, right? Shouldn't we be asking our stu, let's say we ask our children, do you want Ms. Chanley to be your assistant, our interim superintendent or a permanent superintendent? I think the answer will be an overwhelming yes, and let me tell you why. I've been fortunate, both my children have been in the, have been student liaisons, I guess for the last five, six years, under multiple superintendents. And yesterday or day before, over dinner, we were talking about this. I said, I told them I have to go for the Board of Ed meeting. They're saying, Dad, why? So I told them, these are the agenda items. They're saying, wait a minute, haven't they yet, why haven't they made yet Ms. Chanley the permanent superintendent? I said, no, you need to follow the due process. What they told me is that in the short time that they are spent with you, every meeting they go, the children are raising issues, right, or items of concern, and every time then they come back the next month or the next, it's bi-monthly, I guess, every two months, most of those issues have already been addressed. And so if you really ask the children in this township to vote, you will have the full support of the children and correspondingly the parents as well. So Ms. Chanley, I want to tell you, don't be discouraged by what you hear from a small minority of the township. All of you, all the board members here have won through majority votes. Ms. Chanley, the parents of the children, we have full confidence in you, and I'm hoping that soon you would be our permanent superintendent as well. Again, thank you, everyone, for your service, and please don't let, get dissuaded by what I think is a very minority opinion. Thank you.
Seeing nobody else, we will close the public forum. Our next item on the agenda is our closed session resolution. Be it resolved, the Board of Education of the Township of Monroe hereby moves into closed session in accordance with the Sunshine Law, Chapter 231 of the Public Laws of 1975, NJSA 10:4 through 6, through 10:4-21, to discuss the following subjects. Discussion of employment of business administrator/board secretary. Discussion of possible appointment of acting school business administrator/board secretary. Discussion regarding extending acting superintendent's appointment matters protected by attorney-client privilege. Following closed session, action may be taken. The discussion conducted in closed session can be disclosed to the public at such time as the need for confidentiality no longer exists. Do I have a motion?
So move.
All those in favor?
Aye.
I oppose.
I have a question.
Yes, Michelle?
Yes, has everyone been notified and rice accordingly?
Yes.
And we have those, that documentation in the files?
Yes, we do. Okay. Okay, we're going to come back into the public session. Our next item on the agenda is personnel, items A through C. If I can get a motion to approve?
Motion.
Item A through C with the, on item C adding NA into the blank spot.
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Chiarella, seconded by Ms. Belko.
Yes.
Okay. Okay. Ms. Chiarella?
Yes.
Yes to all. Ms. Ratner?
Um, requise on A, obscene on B, and yes on C.
Ms. Rutske?
No on A, no on B, and yes on C.
Ms. Arminio?
Going to abstain on A. Sorry, I thought these were, yes on B and yes on C.
Mrs. Bora?
Yes on all three.
Mr. Nikotinsky?
Yes to all.
Mrs. Fabiano?
Requise on A and B, yes to C.
Ms. Belko? Yes on all. Ms. Bierman votes yes on all. Madam President?
Yes to all.
One, two, three, four, five, six. I see six yeses across the board, so all pass.
Thank you. Our next scheduled Board of Education meeting will be May 11th, 2022. Our meeting is adjourned. Thank you.